I didn't get a pop of that time. All safe, we're live. All right, Smithville Board of Aldermen meeting is now called to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. First thing on the agenda is the public hearing for the annexation of lot 24. So item number three, public hearing for the annexation of lot 24 in Lakeside Crossing. Purpose of this public hearing is for the Board of Aldermen to hear testimony related to the proposed annexation of Lakeside Crossing Lot 24. Persons wishing to be heard at the public hearing should have signed up with the city clerk and you must give your name and address. Public present via video conference conference will be given the opportunity to be heard. This evening, each person will have a three-minute time limit. If you have concerns other than annexation that are specifically related to Lakeside Crossing Lot 24, those concerns can be brought forward during the public comment section in today's meeting. The public hearing for the annexation of Lakeside Crossing Lot 24 is now open. Do we have anybody, Linda, signed up? Okay, I will call upon persons who wish to speak in order they signed up with the city clerk. We have none. Therefore, there being no further testimony. I will close the public hearing for the annexation of Lakeside Crossing Lot 24. Before we move to the consent agenda, I want to congratulate Smithville Warriors football team. They are state champions. Alderman Chevalier and I both have our Warrior shirts on. I saw there's going to be some gear available at the school. I know the Warrior shop's got some stuff back in stock, so. We'll have a proclamation for them to provide at a meeting. I gotta get that coordinated with Coach. We did give them a proclamation before they left to Columbia. I met with the linemen for dinner and gave them a proclamation declaring that Friday Warrior Football Day. So they're super excited and then they brought home the trophy, so. Great stuff. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Alderman Atkins.
Mr. Mayor, I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Kibelski. Is that a second? You're on mute, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, any discussion on the consent agenda? As you see, there's quite a few of our resolutions on there. One comment I do want to make, I did go back and look, Alderman Chevalier's first resolution was 520. He is the elder alderman here. Majority of this board was Resolution 590. John, you've done a lot of work in the few years. We're up to over 1,000 now. Any questions? One thing I did want to ask, since I do see Matt Denton is on. I hope you're feeling better and you're ready for interrogation, but on the playground equipment, were we able to work with AB Creative to get a swing set that is wheelchair capable?
Yes, that um, the the accessible accessible swing is something that's wheelchair accessible. I have a link for you to check out.
So they can, it has a ramp or something so they can load the wheelchair?
Yep.
Okay, that's awesome. We have some parents that'll be very excited about that. I got a text message this weekend, somebody who does a heritage park is very happy with the improvements there. So, great work. Any other discussion or questions on the consent agenda? All those in favor approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Saves us a lot of time on all those resolutions. Committee reports, EDC Matt? Do we have anything to report? Alderman Kibelski or Ms. Mitchell?
It, I'm not for sure if Anna wants to go or not, but um. We made, we're still working on the policies for, I'm trying to think, we're working on the. Sorry, I don't have my notes right here. Trying to look through it. Anna, do you have that? We, so we're working on our policies for the board for incentives for developers. Just basically plugging away at making recommendations for the board.
I think you guys had a presentation on chapter 103.
That's why I was trying to think of which chapter we're on. We've had so many.
Yeah, in our last EDC meeting, we went over decisions on recommendations to the board on TIF. And then we had a presentation from Megan Miller from Gilmoreville on chapter 10353. And then at our next regular meeting, which will be in January, we will go over decisions on recommendations to the board on chapter 10353. And then we'll have another presentation from Megan regarding CIDs. So we're getting through the list of different incentives that are available to developers.
One quick question, I know it was quarterly before, are we gonna have the the EDC dashboard that shows business licenses and chamber numbers and such to on a quarterly basis still?
Yes, I will continue to do those on a quarterly basis. That will be included in the January meeting with the year-end figures.
Awesome, thank you. City administrators' report, as you all may be aware, Ms. Wagner is not here tonight. She is experiencing the joy of hot cross buns and Mary had a little lamb and baby shark at her daughter's concert right now. So got that going. So Ms. Mitchell, do you have anything to add to the city administrators' report?
I do, just a few updates for you all. The neighborhood beautification grant materials for those will be sent to the HOAs after the first of the year. Those materials will include a cover letter explaining the process, who to contact for questions, anything like that. Petitions for the Smithville Special Road District, please have those signatures into City Hall by this Friday. So staff can confirm the voter status prior to submitting those to the county. Direction finder surveys, please continue to encourage your citizens to fill out and respond to the survey. And then a couple event reminders, the MML Westgate meeting at White Iron Bridge is on January 27th. And please mark your calendars for May 25th for our Board of Aldermen Retreat with Patty Genter. And then Chuck also has one update regarding fiber.
Let me get unmuted. So we've had a couple calls and Cynthia thought that maybe I should talk a little bit about the conduit, the fiber companies that are being installing infrastructure. We've got basically two companies, AT&amp;T and United Fiber. They are both working in Smithville right now. They've each got several crews. We've had several discussions with them about, you know, access to yours and what they're doing and getting holes backfilled and stuff like that, but they've been pretty receptive when we get ahold of them. And they should be hanging door hangers out for everybody. And we do have an inspector that goes out, he's doing a lot of work, trying to keep up with all the different crews, plus all the other stuff he has to look at, but he has verified that they have been hanging door hangers. He doesn't check every home, but he has, when he stopped by and to look and see, he has noticed door hangers are out there, so. You know, sometimes they get hung on the front door and people go in their garage, or sometimes they get blowed away, so. And we've had, we've had calls that people don't get the door hangers, but contractors, we've had several discussions with them about this, so they should be hanging door hangers. And I think Cynthia probably forwarded some contact information, but if somebody wants, is having problems, they can just call the city. They've been pretty responsive. We worked with them. In a couple areas, they wanted to drill some new holes in our streetscape project and the new alley. And we had to move those areas. We've had some other property owners request that, you know, the boxes that they're gonna install at different places in their yards be moved to areas where they prefer it to be. So they're gonna be working here for a few more months and then they'll have to come in and put the fiber in and stuff. They will reestablish the lawns that they've tore up. They are fixing the holes. They've got several of them open right now. They're trying to get enough so that they can, you know, have, make it efficient for themselves, but they've been pretty good to work with. And we've had a couple instances where we've told them to stop work. And we've had some meetings with them, so they've been listening, so. But if anybody has any issues or concerns, if they're not getting the satisfaction that they need, then just give us a call and they've been pretty receptive to us. I mean, ultimately, we can revoke their license, revoke their permit, and they'd have to start over and there is a cost to that, so. And they're trying to work with us as best they can. And they do, we can't stop them from using the right of way or the easements. You know, it's access for everybody to have communication and broadband and internet services and stuff like that, so we. So they do pay franchise fees to the city and not United Fiber yet because they haven't got any services, but AT&amp;T and they have paid their permit fees, so they're trying to follow the rules, but most of the holes that they dig are to locate existing utilities, so they don't damage them. It's not that, they've hit a few, several of our water lines in fact. And, but they're trying to do the best they can, so sometimes, sometimes it just happens, so. And I just wanted to give you that update and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, one of the items we just approved in the consent agenda is our GIS, so hopefully that'll help us with those locates in the future, right Chuck?
That'll help because, you know, right now we've got three guys that basically know where the infrastructure is and their memories aren't always accurate, so this will help. And it will all get surveyed in. So, you know, we can't survey underground, but we can identify all the water valves, the hydrants, and, you know, hopefully everything was put in straight line, so. That will help, yes.
I know I talked to United the other day. They had pulled a couple crews out because I think that day they had total, your department had somewhere over 120 locates requested.
They've been taxing our crew. Right now, we're short two guys in the utility department. We've got one locator and we've got, between the two companies, they've probably got seven to eight crews out at any given time doing a work and, you know, when they want to locate, they don't want one address, they want one neighborhood or several addresses. And it takes a while because we're locating water and sewer. And sometimes those lines are old and we don't know exactly where they're at. Some of them don't have the tracer wire when they were installed, so it takes a little bit longer to locate it. And with one locator, it was really difficult to keep up with that. Plus, you have other construction work going on as well, you know. Evergy, Inspire, and any construction site and any homeowner that, you know, is wanting to dig a hole, all those come in. And so it really overtaxed them, so yes, United Fiber pulled out a couple crews just so that we could keep up.
So they've been, I think they've all been fairly reasonable and Chuck did run out of his office to stop him on one of the things, so. We are keeping an eye on it. If anybody gets ahold of you, let them know that we we're aware and there is a lot going on right now with infrastructure.
Yeah, and I know people get upset because they hold in their yards and, you know, there's a lot of nice lawns out there and people take care of those things and you know, when the, when the hole's left open for a couple days. The most recent one that Marv sent in was an issue where they actually hit an AT, United Fiber hit AT&amp;T line. And they had to wait for AT&amp;T to fix it, but then AT&amp;T didn't let United Fiber know. And so the hole was left open for several days. As soon as we found out about it, we contacted United Fiber, they went back and they filled it in today, so. They've been pretty responsive. If people have issues, they can always call our office and we'll track it down and try and, try and work with them.
No, we appreciate that Chuck. I know there's a lot going on. Any other questions for Chuck or Anna? All right, next item on the agenda is number seven, bill number 2924-21. Alderman Hartman.
Mayor would like to make a motion for bill number 2924-21, amending section 520.130, right away maintenance, second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Atkins, second. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
We may have someone on that wants to speak about it.
Oh, do we have public comment on this one?
Is that right? Mike? You're muted.
Mike, you're on mute.
Mike, you're on mute. Can you hear us now? Or can you try to talk again?
Still can't hear him.
We still can't hear you, Mike. Mike, you want to try and leave and rejoin and see if you can get your microphone working? Wait for a minute.
Yeah, hey, guys, he can't get his mic to work. I had been actually talking to him this past week and he kind of expressed a concern or a request. And we're, in our packet, it talks about the, looking at the ordinance for Gladstone, Missouri. And it has information in there about the property owner along a public right of way. They contains a drainage way having a width, depth, or slope to create a defined channel, which cannot be mowed or maintained by normal residential mower or weed removal tool shall not be subject to that requirement. And Chuck, I was curious, I mean, what, what, what are your thoughts on adding something like that to ours?
I can't remember, John, was it you that had the question from the gentleman over was it Highland? Somebody?
Well, no, that's right, yeah. I think he said, yeah, that's the one that we were talking about, yeah, that's Mike.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, like I had mentioned, it's not our intent to make single-family residential property owners, give them an undue hardship with this. There's a lot of single-family properties that we mow a lot of right of way for. We were, what we were gonna do after the ordinance was approved is sit down with our code enforcement person and our street division manager who's responsible for all the right of way mowing and actually look at all the areas that we mow and then make that call. A lot of the areas, I'll throw out for an example, along Highway 169 are owned by developments, businesses, and we do a lot of mowing there. And so it's intended for them. You know, there's, there's a lot of big properties out there as well that we figure that the yard is very well maintained and they've probably contracted a landscape company to do it, but because we've been doing the right of way, they just don't do it. But, and I can't, I don't, I don't know Mike. So I don't know his specific situation, but we're, we're not looking at causing an undue hardship. I don't know if adding something like this would be a problem other than there's a lot of people with different capabilities and you know, what may be hard for one person may not be hard for another, so it's, it's still gonna come down to, you know, a judgment call, but we're not looking at putting anybody out on deep slope or steep slopes or deep ditches to necessarily have to do, but we just need to we, we take one guy basically off the street crew to mow all summer long. I mean, that's what he does five days a week all summer long. He's just mow. And we could use him to do other tasks, so that, that's the reason for this. And it seems like we're mowing a lot of property that is commercially or development owned.
So John, can you get, can you get Chuck's address to make sure he can verify that one when they're looking at these?
Yeah, I think we said it before, but yeah, I'll, I'll confirm with him again just to make sure that, that this, I mean, I looked at it and I, I believe that this one would fall under that, you know, exemption.
You know, and, and I was looking at the map of Smithville as well and some of the areas that we do. And there's some areas where property owners, whether it's easy to mow or not, probably just don't even think about it because you know, they back, their backyard's back onto a road, they've got a privacy fence up there. And they don't even think about what's behind that fence. And we're gonna continue to mow those areas as well. And we're not, like I said, we're, we're just not trying to make an undue hardship, but there's a lot of people I think that are taking advantage of it. Of our generosity to mow the right of way, so we're just trying to straighten that out a little bit. So we can sure look at any of these on a case-by-case basis and you know, just because one property owner can't mow an area doesn't mean another property owner couldn't mow it, so we can take a look at them. But I don't know that that language would hurt if you wanna, if you want to add that to it. I don't know that it would make any difference. I mean, as to, as to how we were gonna implement.
Man, I'd be curious to hear others' thoughts on that if, if they have a preference.
I, John, I, I like Chuck's recommendation. I, I certainly think that we need to be attentive to our constituents if they bring this to us. But I think that we, we have a process for that and, and I do like Chuck's idea of looking at a lot closer. I guess we can evaluate that. And Mayor, I don't know the process for amending an ordinance if later on we get to where there's quite a few that we need to do this, if it's better to do it now or do it later.
I mean, we're, that's what we're doing now is amending the current ordinance, so. I mean, it just would be similar to this process if we need to change language later. But I think that the language that Alderman Chevalier recommended is still kind of leaving it up to a judgment call. On, we're looking at the property, so if Chuck and team plan to already do that, I think that's fair. I know you used to be in this business where you mowed commercial properties. And I know there are, you know, some of the strip malls and stuff along 169 that they don't mow out to the highway because, and you're, they're getting their property mowed, it shouldn't take them that much longer to get that, that piece taken care of, so. We don't want 10-inch tall grass along the highway when we're coming into town.
I agree, and I'm in favor moving forward with what we discuss this evening.
What I might suggest, Mayor, Mike, can you hear me? Yeah, okay. And why don't you just give me a call tomorrow or at your convenience and I can come out and take a look at your specific issue and we can discuss it. I'm at City Hall, so just call the general City Hall number and ask for Chuck Souls.
Yeah, I know.
I give you my cellphone number, but I don't know about on Zoom.
Probably a good caller, Chuck. All right, any other discussion on this one? All right, clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Sarver.
Aye.
Alderman Kibelski.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Uledov.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Six zero.
A motion carries. Ms. Mitchell, please read the bill.
An ordinance repealing and replacing section 520.130, maintenance of sidewalk area by abutting owner and occupant and enacting in its place. A new ordinance, section 520.130, maintenance of right of way by abutting owner or occupant.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number eight. Alderman Hartman.
Mayor would like to make a motion for bill number 2925-21, Richardson Street Plaza Overlay District, second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Atkins. The applicants here, is there anyone else here that we need? I think, Matt, are you with the applicant too?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody have any questions?
Um, no, I think it's a great project. It just, any, any idea of timeline? I know there's construction process and costs and additional things, what, any, any, we've been hearing from constituents. Questions on timeline for starting?
Uh, I could, we're currently working on construction documents. And so hopefully we'll have those completed within the next, I would say, four to six weeks. And hopefully that timeline aligns with Mr. Crease's timeline.
Yeah, I would add that once we receive construction documents, then I'll put it out to bid and then once we, you know, find a the better the remove forward with anticipation would be to start site work, you know, as early as we can in the spring.
Any other questions? And there's no public comment on this one, right? Okay. All right, clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Uledov.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Kibelski.
Aye.
Alderman Sarver.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Mitchell, please read the bill.
An ordinance approving a conceptual zoning plan for Richardson Street Plaza on certain lands located in the city of Smithville, Missouri, under the authority granted by the Code of Ordinances of the City of Smithville, Missouri.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number nine. Alderman Dan.
Most to approve, bill number 2926-21, annexation lot 24, Lakeside Crossing, first reading.
Do I have a second? Alderman Harmon.
Yeah, second that.
Thank you. Jack, is this the last one? Daniel, Daniel it all's very happy. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Kibelski.
Aye.
Alderman Sarver.
Aye.
Alderman Uledov.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Mitchell, please read the bill.
An ordinance, an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city of Smithville, Missouri.
Thank you. Next item is number 10. Alderman Hartman.
Mayor would like to make a motion for bill number 2927-21, purchasing agreement with SHI Corporation, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Kibelski.
Aye.
Alderman Uledov.
Aye.
Alderman Sarver.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Mitchell, please read the bill.
An ordinance approving an agreement with Software House International.
Thank you. Next item is number 11. Alderman Hartman.
Mayor would like to make a motion for resolution 1004, single final, uh, single-phase final plaque for Richardson Street Plaza.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution 1004, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is number 12. Are you, you at all?
Most to approve, resolution 1005, Clay County American Rescue Plan Act funding request.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Hartman.
Second, sir.
Any discussion? Thank you, Chuck, for getting this filled out and submitted. All those in favor approving resolution one zero zero five, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Any public comment? No? Uh, next item is number fourteen on the agenda. We had an opening on planning and zoning. I know we didn't have a resume in the packet. Billy is, we've done some work for the city, he's done the campground work, Mr. Electric is downtown, I'm sure a lot of you familiar with them or drove by and seen their vehicles. So I will make a nomination of Billy Messick for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Kibelski.
Aye.
Alderman Sarver.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Jack, will you make sure you let Billy know? You'll be, he'll be at the meeting on Tuesday, hopefully. Any new business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Alderman Harbin.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting this evening, sir.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor adjourning, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Stand adjourned. Have a good evening.